And announce some other hearings on consideration of amendment AM 13-01 proposing amendments to the Lake County zoning ordinance to add the land use regulations for the cultivation of medical marijuana by adding Article 72 to Chapter 21 of the Lake County Code. Project applicant is the County of Lake proposing permanent regulations regarding the cultivation of medical marijuana within the unincorporated areas of Lake County. Highlights of the proposed ordinance are as follows: indoor cultivation limited to 100 square feet, no outdoor cultivation within community growth boundaries, and parcels located outside community growth boundaries that are larger than one acre allow outdoor cultivation in limited amounts. Collective or cooperative organizations would be able to cultivate up to 48 mature medical plants with location on a agricultural zone property of at least 20 acres. Mr. Quill.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. The Board of Supervisors directed the Community Development Department to develop a permanent draft of a permanent cultivation ordinance to address marijuana cultivation throughout the county. This is necessary due to the interim ordinance being a stopgap measure, not being able to effectively deal with the environmental concerns and neighborhood concerns that we're experiencing throughout the county, and also because that interim ordinance will expire in the middle of next year. This draft ordinance that's before you for review today has been developed through the input of a number of different county agencies. It's been developed based on input provided through numerous complaints to the Community Development Department over the last year, both from neighbors in communities with all types of issues and concerns, everything from respiratory problems to concern and with criminal activity, home invasion robberies, people breaking into their properties to get to neighboring grow sites to stealing marijuana. The other aspect of the problems we're facing has to do with the environmental damage that's occurring throughout the county, in various proportions rural areas throughout the county. Everything from terracing for areas to grow marijuana to grading massive paths to construct very large greenhouses and hoop houses on property with and without homes. The amount of marijuana being cultivated, the number of people coming to Lake County to cultivate from other areas has been very problematic. What we're seeing in the staff of Community Development and the Sheriff's Office is an increase in people coming to Lake County to cultivate. And one of the problems that we're seeing with that is that folks are coming here with little regard for local laws, local environment, local neighborhoods, and they're here to grow marijuana and export it out of the county. And this ordinance seeks to address that problem in a way that's actually enforceable. So as I go through the presentation, I'm going to present you with a slideshow of a number of sites and just to illustrate the problems we're facing. And I'll talk more about the enforcement challenges that the county has had under the current ordinance, how this ordinance seeks to fix that problem, and still provide opportunities for local folks to have access to locally grown medicine. So with that, I think I'll lead off. And I also want to announce Captain Chris Macedo of the Lake County Sheriff's Office is here that will assist in answering some of the questions and statistical crime issues, crime criminal statistics, sorry. And also want to point out that the command staff with the Lake County Sheriff's Office has reviewed this ordinance thoroughly, provided comments on it before the draft was revised with Superior Commission in consideration. There are a number of problems that we're seeing, and I'll start with just the problem of grow sites with causing terrorists and hill sites. This is unfortunately becoming very common. And I want to point out that not one of these grow sites had a property owner come into the county and request to apply for grading permit first before doing the grading work they've done, not one in the last three years. See, you know, throughout, you know, this is indicative throughout the county. You see, in some cases, plastic swimming pools are used to hold the potting soil. Concern we have with that is our wonderful warm summers here tend to bake that plastic and about a year or two, it breaks into little pieces like this and just goes everywhere. It's very brittle, and it's very difficult from an abatement standpoint, how do you remove that material and not shed, shred that plastic and have it everywhere? This is an example of kind of on the extreme end. This was a grow site on private property that were ten different privately held properties in the middle of the national forest that all have massive grow sites on. These greenhouses were substantial and outdoor grow. The terraces with the back end of it, that's roughly an eight to 10 foot vertical cut. There's four of them. We can't fix that. There's no practical way to fix that. This is in a Lake Pillsbury watershed. Lake Pillsbury coincidentally is experiencing the same blue green algae issues that we've been seeing fairly for the last several years. This was a paper subdivision lot in East, close proximity to developed lots. This one's a little further up the road, still a paper subdivision lot area in East. Coming, the greenhouses and issues with fertilizer throughout, right now, the interim ordinance considers greenhouses to be indoor, and we immediately realize the problem of that language because greenhouses started popping up everywhere on large graded paths. A lot of them are using this light deprivation process. You'll see large commercial grade generators. You'll see plastic used to, for light deprivation, black plastic. You'll see lots of not only potting soils but other soil amendments, bags and bags of materials left, 50 gallon drums of fertilizer. One of the things we're starting to pay more attention to is phosphorus and its impacts on Lake and its ability to produce blue green algae. And in fact, a number of these coast states have banned it or severely restricted the sales of phosphate materials. And in some of these sites, we're seeing materials that are almost entirely phosphate or phosphorus, bags and bags of it. This was a very large site out of Clear Lake, had multiple greenhouses. You'll see on the next two slides the chemicals that we're talking about still on the ground. That's a problem for our lake. This gets into our watershed. We're finding grows right up along the shoreline of Clear Lake. This was a hundred plant row between two subdivisions. The odors were profuse, significant complaints generated. Grows right on shore of the lake, there's four or five of them that I've got slides of just to illustrate that concern and why this ordinance has recommended setbacks from the lake and other water bodies. This is the Rodman Slough area. We had a number of outdoor grows in this area. This shows two of them. I think there were four in close proximity there. Here's a ground view of, I believe, this one, or no, I'm sorry, there was one over in this area. That photo's looking this way, you see the wetland here. This is off of Procy Creek, the channel comes around. There's a tremendous number of grows, backyard grows further upstream. They're all very close proximity to the creek, the Fort Rose and the Cass Creek. There's two of them right here, and there's a branch of the creek that meanders around. This is over on the kind of the Lakeport Kelseyville area, Magoswood, large grow right there. We can't see this clearly, there's also a water channel wraps around here. This is Kelsey Creek. We found this in March of this year. Fish and Game found it actually and told us about it. This was an intended grow site. They were clearing the lower portion adjacent to the creek below the main channel. They're in, within the main channel, the creek, and this was to develop a grow site and hide an area down in that lower bank where they could cultivate. We had soil in Kelsey Creek, and this was literally a week after the hitch discussion became, you know, was in the press and we were talking about what to do about the hitch. Kelsey Creek's a hitch very quick. Here's just some general examples. We find it in road expanses and paper subdivision areas. We find it along roads in paper subdivision areas. We find large grows with 10 foot high fences all around them. We find them in more suburban areas, again, the pools. Just out of Lakeport, this site had a 10 or 12 foot fence all the way around it and lookout for security, plants all over the place. We find sites where they've decimated the roads just trucking in the water, you know, grading in new driveways. All this stuff has to be dealt with or runs down into our watershed. Another aerial shot from the Sheriff's Office of the site that was eradicated this year. There were four major grow sites.
No, that's all right.
What you don't see in this photo is a 50 foot high dam sitting right here and three other dams that they struck it without permit, so they had a water supply for this grow.
What was that?
That was out of northeast of Upper Lake. Here's on the east end of County, you know, just another example. Here's, and you know, I read this and I hear this frequently, that, oh, it's the vineyards. The vineyards are causing the problems to the lake. The, you know, they're up against the lake. You know, every vineyard that has been developed in this county for years and years has gone through an environmental review and permitting process. They did grading permits after they'd gone through an environmental analysis. They provide pumbers, they protect oak woodings areas by avoiding them. They provide vegetative pumbers and setbacks from waters courses in lakes. And what we find with the majority of these larger scale marijuana cultivation sites is no grading permits, sloppy grading work, no grading, no erosion control mechanisms whatsoever. And, you know, this is kind of zoomed out here, but what they do is just go in and blade everything off and push the dirt and the vegetation that's in that dirt all around the perimeter and then start trenching and digging the holes and setting up for the grow site. Here's another paper subdivision lot where they removed some trees in the understoring. We have a big problem with removal of forested areas. Some of this is in temperate reserve zone property. The cobbler's are more in the cobb area. And you'll just see clearings for grow sites and green, you know, with the greenhouses. Now, if a vineyard did this, they'd be in trouble. You know, we would go through an environmental process. We would be concerned about archaeological resources, water related issues. We would look at that, and in a lot of these cases, we would require an archaeological and biological study upfront before they grade it. Once the damage is done, you can't fix it. You don't know whether they damaged a sensitive archaeological site or damaged a rare danger plant. There's no way of knowing once they sterilize the site. Fogs Lake in the background slightly here. There's another one up, a smaller one on that side of Fogs. So I want to touch on the neighborhood cultivation impacts. You know, it's all over the place. In some areas, it's almost a third of the properties. You know, if you consider that a planting of a dozen or so large plants, you're going to smell that for, you know, 300, 400 feet away when conditions are right. So if you're living in town, law circles, 300 feet, you know, out from around your house, and you might have six, seven, eight grow sites in that area. So the odors, and that's part of the reason the odor complaints have increased over the last year or two, is you see sites like this. Here's a backyard full of them. We abated one under the ordinance this year that was a 5,000 foot lot with 48 plants in the backyard. You know, houses all around it. And greenhouses on a lot of these. Here's a 12 foot high, you know, doubled up fence, RV in the front, and this is in town, Lakeport area. Here's, you know, this was taken last year, but it's just, it's an example of what's still going on. This guy was camping out on a lot in Spring Valley, used for Mendocino, had homes built on both sides of them, scared the heck out of those property owners of their, here. And once the task force was finally able to get out there, and they're overwhelmed with this, they were able to address that. But it takes time. In the meantime, you've got property owners that invested their future in this county, invested their, you know, everything they have, the owner of a home here, retired here, and they're afraid. There's a lot of that going on, unfortunately. This was a site in Kelseyville, very nice neighborhood. There was, the house was full of pot, that yard was full of it. This was eradicated. Property owner inherited the house. He and his wife and kids live in Santa Rosa, but came up daily to tend to his garden here that he impacted this neighborhood. That was something like 40 plants on that site. It's a half acre property. Another one in the north shore communities. You know, these are small backyards. Big problem with the indoor operations, which the interim ordinance currently does not address. We've seen an increase in house fires, an increase in properties, even in dated Kitten Valley Lake subdivision, there's been three or four grow houses that have been eradicated this year. And those are one of the ones that law enforcement found out about and wanted to address. And these operations, some of them are quite sophisticated. The task force goes in with a warrant, they address these sites and eradicate the plants, and then call in my, my department so that we can send an inspector out to inspect the electrical. And we've had to pull, have PG&E pull a lot of meters this year. So our staff is pulled into that. We look at these situations with unsafe wiring. All of this is wiring factor. My inspectors go into these sites where the meter, the sub panels are hot, and they're just baffled that the house hasn't already burned to the ground. You know, this is Kitten Valley Lake, it's everywhere, but just imagine a heated community with its own security and you have these things going on. So I think that's, that's the end of the slide. So wait, back to the ordinance. When we drafted this, we, we looked at numerous, and when I say we, we're talking about staff from the Sheriff's Office, staff from the County Council, staff from the Administration Department. I've had this reviewed by Fish and Wildlife Service, the Regional Board is reviewing it, the VA has reviewed it. You know, we, we've had support from those agencies for the language that's in the ordinance, and we've received comments from a number of those agencies that's been incorporated into this ordinance. All these agencies are very concerned either with public safety or environment or folk. We need to all be really, really concerned about the lake, and not only for just the health of the lake, the health of the whole watershed, but the future of our county, the future of our local economy. And if the lake continues to have the problems it has because of being overloaded with phosphorus, which, which just feeds that blue green algae, we keep having the increase in home invasion robberies, which I believe, Chris, we've had 11 in the last 14.
Good morning. Here to date so far, just in the county's jurisdiction, not including cities limits of Clear Lake or Lakeport, we've had 14 cases involving home invasion type robberies or strong arm robberies, marijuana related. That doesn't, those figures don't include burglaries of marijuana or petty thefts or grand thefts that in particular involves crimes of violence or threats of violence qualified for a robbery statistic.
So with all these issues, trying to come up with, the board, you know, board appointed me as department head. I work for them. They, they directed me to draft an ordinance. So I needed to draft something that, that I felt, and with County Council's help, that we felt was legally defensible, that would actually have the capability of solving the problems that we're experiencing throughout the county. The last thing I'm going to do is take an ordinance to one that's not going to work. My credibility means something to me in that, you know, I work for them, I do the best I can by them. So this ordinance was not just written in a vacuum by Britt Colwell, as some people may think. It's had a lot of input. It's my department, it's the Sheriff's Department that feels the calls. We're the ones dealing daily with angry citizens that are upset that they can't get the pot, you know, their neighbors' pot plants eradicated and they can't read, and they have respiratory problems. They had somebody else break through their backyard last night trying to sell, steal their neighbor's pot. They're reading what's going on in the papers and they're, they're afraid. How many home invasion robberies do we need in this county? They used to never happen in this county. I've been here 38 years, and what's going on now is never, you know, this is new, and it should be a concern to all of us, everybody. So we, we looked at ways to develop an ordinance that's going to be enforceable, that has, if adopted by the Board of Supervisors, can effectively get the outdoor cultivation out of the neighborhoods, can effectively deal with the environmental impacts that we're having all around these mountains that bring this beautiful lake. And this is what we came up with. We reviewed numerous other county medical marijuana ordinances throughout the whole state, numerous ordinances. In fact, County Council has put together a matrix that I'll, that we have, that just gives a, an idea of what the limits are in various other counties. It is very, you go from Alameda County on and on to Yuma County. And this is just a quick cheat sheet that, you know, we can refer to throughout the day. So we, we wanted to make sure that what we propose to you and later to the Board of Supervisors is not out of line with what everybody else is doing. The sad reality is that if Lake County does not tighten up on these regulations when everybody else has, we're going to have an even larger influx of people coming here from every corner of the country to grow marijuana. And it's the for profit marijuana. We're not talking medical, when they're coming here calling us from New York and saying, hey, can we, you know, we want to buy a lot in Clear Lake Oaks, how many plants can we grow? And that was a call I received personally, a week and a half ago from a guy in New York. Unfortunately, this is typical. We're on the map. It's not good for our environment to be on this particular map because we can't control it all if we don't have clear, concise, enforceable regulations to deal with it. So that's really the gist of why this ordinance is written the way it is, it's why unfortunately it has to be so lengthy, has numerous findings, it has lots of provisions in it for enforcement capacity, and that was necessary so that this could be a standalone ordinance with its own processes and procedures for enforcement. One of the biggest challenges we've had with the interim ordinance is that it relies on the county nuisance abatement process for enforcement. And that has created an unbelievable hardship for both the Sheriff's Department and the Community Development Department because it's forced my department to have to somehow write notice of nuisances and orders to abate on marijuana. We don't want to be doing that. That's not our daily wear. But because we have this 30 day notice process to go by, because there's this lengthy appeals process that some folks have used to stall us before the plants get removed, like the 48 plant in 5,000 foot residential lot in East, is a good example. It's made the enforcement agencies a lot less effective than we should be to deal with these problems of neighborhood safety and environmental. So this ordinance seeks to provide a five day process for abatement on the sites that are not, not necessary to be summer summarily abated, abated immediately, and it spells out conditions in which those sites should be summarily abated so that the sheriff on their own can eradicate those sites or abate those nuisances that are necessary to be abated. For instance, the guy growing in the middle of town off of Main Street or too close to the pool or the park. Those should be summarily abated, that they shouldn't have to wait a week. You know, the, the public danger is empty. We see that with the influx of home invasion robberies. So there's numerous bits and pieces of this ordinance that work together to try to weave enforceable, meaningful ordinance that will allow Lake County and its officials to get this problem under control. And if we don't get it under control, we need to be concerned about long-term image, future investment in the county, that's a major resort coming back to life, whether it's the wine grape industry, which is investing more than any other industry in this county in terms of the millions of dollars being spent developing those vineyards, and bringing the tourism industry back. And also to deal with, you know, all the folks that moved here over the years to retire, the folks that moved here to raise families that are already, we're regretting they came here. The complaints we get are all over the map. We get complaints from people that move into residential subdivisions, nice neighborhoods, and they buy in the winter and they don't realize that their neighbors on both sides are growing marijuana. When they say something about it, they get threatened. It's, you know, their backyards that people trade through to get to that site. It's their neighbor's pit bulls that are lunging out for the fence and getting loose and chasing them down the street when they walk. Yes, it's happened regularly. So we need somehow to get a handle on this, but still be respectful to the folks that need medical marijuana. We need to have a local supply of medical marijuana available to local people. And that's through the, you know, the options there, and there's still several options for folks that cannot grow outdoors in a community. They can grow it in a shed or in a home or in the garage. They can join a collective or cooperative who could grow it out on an agricultural Assuming for a moment that the ordinance is adopted with the provision that 20 acre agricultural zone parcel is where the larger grows would have to occur. There are 529 properties in the county that meet that 20 acre minimum and that zoning requirement. And I'll just end with this, the reasoning for putting it in ad is because those areas are flat, those areas don't have the stormwater runoff problems, they already have agricultural operations in those areas, and it's a lot easier to handle the nuisance odor conditions in an agricultural area where people are kind of expect that anyway, whether it's cattle or application of sulfur on a vineyard. So the idea was to help protect the watershed, get this problem out of the mountains, and it's been so difficult to regulate, and it's so difficult to, to repair, to put it out in the areas where you have less likelihood of that kind of damage occurring. Thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
Anybody have any questions?
Just one more quick question. I know that the interim ordinance is about to be suspended. Just one more quick question. I know that the interim ordinance is about to expire. Have you heard anything or do you see any direction at all from the board supervisors on this plan three?
No. There's been no, no discussion with, that I've had with the board about that. And, you know, there may be an opportunity to have that discussion with them when this comes forward.
All right. I'll open this up to the public. Please state your name and for the record and print your name on the tab. And please, I consider board, be respectful. And I know, Mr. Roby, you will be as you are always. Try not to repeat yourself. Even at my age, I understand that. I won't. And I'll be brief.
Here's the thing. Well, I just want to say, I agree. This is a big problem and needs to be dealt with. It's amazing to me that the county has the ability to enforce all the ag rules on vineyards, but they haven't been able to do the, that are obviously agricultural growth. And I learned all the time, you know, eight years I was sitting there and twelve years I was on the board, ag and residential uses do not go together. They have inherent built-in conflicts. So anyway, I support the efforts to deal with this program. But today I'm here as the chair of the local group of the Lake County Sierra Club. And, you know, part of our function, besides doing hikes and things, is to be a watchdog to make sure that the county follows CECL, the California Environmental Quality Act. And Rick says he wants this ordinance to be legally defensible, and I do too. And it's not right now simply because there's been no initial study. You know what an initial study is? It's just a checklist where you say, I looked at these different environmental potential impacts. Okay? They're not looking at it. And it's obvious that if you're making people grow indoors, even in the staff report, it talks about the impacts of these grow houses and what can happen with electrical problems and so forth. It's obvious there's going to be environmental impacts. You don't want to just ignore it. You want to follow the proper CECL procedure, do your initial study. That's all I'm here to ask. I don't want to be put in the unenviable position of having the Sierra Club sue the county over a process issue that is so simple and easy to solve. That's the only reason I'm here. Thank you.
I'm going to ask that we refrain from clapping for the speakers, please, because it's just going to take a morning.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Len Holland. I would like to first thank members of the planning commission for the opportunity to tell you my story. I'm not a public speaker, and I hope that I can make this brief and clear. I bought my property in nineteen eighty-three. I built my home and developed the land, all while working a forty-hour work week, supporting the wife and two children. I would have the help of my friends as long as I provided the marijuana and alcohol. Once we finished a good day's work, we would sit around and drink our booze and smoke our joints. As time went on, the alcohol and marijuana were controlling my life, and I finally realized that I needed help. On January first, nineteen ninety-one, I entered into an alcoholic and drug rehabilitation center. I am proud to say I have been clean and sober for twenty-two years, eleven months, and fourteen days. For an addict, it is very difficult to stay clean and sober, even in the best of situations. I am sure you have someone in your life that is struggling with some form of addiction and know how it can destroy families. For the past two years, the struggles I deal with on a daily basis have multiplied tenfold just by the actions of my new neighbors. A short time after my neighbors moved into our new home, I came home to the sounds of construction in my backyard. I saw that my neighbors were building a six-foot redwood fence around the backyard. My assumptions were that the fences, the fence yard, the fence yard would be for their four children to have a safe environment to play, since we live near the busy intersection of Parkway and Keeling. As the fence builders worked, my neighbor came to me and introduced himself. He stated in, he wanted the fence done before his wife returned from her trip. He stated to me she was a registered dental assistant and was helping her boss care for some children in a foreign country. After a few moments, he asked me if I would mind, if I would mind if he grew. My response was, grow what? Tomatoes? Potatoes? He answered, no, marijuana. I don't usually tell anyone that I'm in recovery, but I felt I had to do this in this case so that he would know that my situation was not like anyone else. I told him, no, please don't grow. I have been in recovery for twenty-one years and my brother's choice was marijuana. He replied, that's cool. After a few, few more minutes, he returned home. A few weeks later, my neighbor had pit bull dogs in the backyard, in the fence yard, and the children had a new place set placed in the front of, in the front outside of the fenced area. I thought this was odd until one day I was on a ladder pruning my trees and saw they had planted over thirty-five marijuana plants in the fenced area. You cannot imagine what went through my mind at that time. The safe haven I had created for myself, my home, had come crashing down around me. If I were anywhere else, for example, the park, I would have a choice. If someone lit up near me or I would be able to, I'd have a choice, be able to walk away from that. Now I know why they have pit bull dogs. They were there to intimidate anyone who could come close to the fence. I am reminded of this every time I get just a little too close to this fence. They charge fence and act as if they would love to tear through the fence just to get to me. I was ignorant of the marijuana ordinance at that time. I did not realize my neighbors were out of compliance. I could have had the authorities remove these plants. I started making some phone calls to the local authorities that, that when I was informed of the ordinance and that my neighbors were out of compliance, the marijuana task force officer I spoke with stated to me that the plants were growing too close to my residence. They were supposed to be one hundred and fifty feet from, from me. They were only a hundred and eight feet from my back door. The officer also stated the number of plants that were on the property, it was not for medical purposes. It was for sale. He estimated the value of these plants were close to two hundred thousand dollars, and this is tax-free. The task force was ready to intervene, but a local judge put a stop to all the eradication of marijuana for two thousand twelve grow season. I felt helpless. So as the plants grew and the order became stronger, the prevailing winds blowing through the plants and directly into my home, I was not able to use my cooling system as it would intensify the odor of the marijuana. I cannot tell you the anxiety I had endured. I had lost countless hours of sleep, knowing that my drug of choice was right out my back door, one hundred and eight feet away. The odor that we, the odor that reminded me of what I have struggled to avoid these past twenty-one years. I sought medical advice and intended a twelve-week course on how to deal with the anxieties and depressions that my neighbor had placed on me. I'm retired and cannot afford to sell my home. I would need to disclose there is a marijuana grow site a hundred and fifty feet from my residence. And with the real estate market so low, the value of my home would be even less. Then it dawned on me, what about my rights? I'm the only one, am I the only one dealing with this? And what does parcel sites have to do with medical marijuana? As my neighbor and I came, as my neighbors, my neighborhood and I came together discussing what, what's taking place, we started doing some research, one of which, how much does a marijuana plant produce? In our research, we found that one mature plant can produce up to, up to four pounds of processed marijuana. Our research also shows that there is no reason why anyone should have any more than three pounds of marijuana a year for their medical needs. This is not about medical marijuana. This is about profit, tax-free profits. I am asking you, the Lake County County Commission and the board supervisors, to take control of these for growth, for profit operations that are springing up in our once-safe neighborhood. It is up to you, the county officials, to keep us safe. Thank you.
I'm Tom Guthrie, one of the co-leaders of the group Lake County Neighbors Against Commercial Marijuana Growth. Marijuana grows and the problems it causes do not belong to residential areas where senior citizens live and our children play. One older woman I talked with this summer who lives alone is so afraid of surrounding growers with people hanging, as she sleeps with a shotgun under her chest. A young couple who lived here early last summer to start a new family now wishes they'd never heard of Lake County. This is because of the veiled threats from neighboring growers. We have senior citizens in this county who are afraid to walk even their own property because of repeated confrontations with lead pipe carrying thugs guarding top property grow sites. One business owner wrote me that customers checked out of date early because of the intimidating behavior emitted by growers and their hangers-on, and the property began to be vandalized after the complaint. Other business owners write that their customers tell them that they'll take their family vacation somewhere else next year. They no longer feel safer. A grow site next to me is guarded by pit bulls. The dogs attack the fence so aggressively that my wife hasn't left her yard in a year and a half except in cars. I don't walk to a hundred and seventy-five feet to get the nail and papers or leave the yard without a can of pepper spray in my hand. It's no accident that many growers have pit bulls. The Journal of American Veterinary Medical Association did a twenty-year study on how that pit bulls kill and maim more people than some of the other top ten killer dogs combined. I don't have the time here to tell you all the stories I hear of anguish, anger, despair, fear, gutted houses, frustration, falling property values, loss of business, and those who have already fled the county, all because of marijuana growth. Recently, international headlines, many of them, glad because I don't even recognize, reported on the teenage girl killed captive as a sex slave in a Lake County marijuana grow site. Because of the wide coverage of the abused girl, people around the world now know where Lake California, Lake County, California is. What's worse, they know why. And to leave no doubt, many in the mass media show maps of California with big arrows pointing where children are. Let's give the world a better reason to know where we are than this. This is not a religious issue, right or left, but one of public safety and the economic survival of our local businesses that's kept our tourists and vacationers. Thank you.
My name is Norbert Valdez Jr., and I have a couple of questions. Why is it only limited to agricultural properties? Because there are a lot of us that live in an egg zone that are subject to the smell coming across. And our rights are being violated if you allow that it only be done in the egg. And there are other properties that are commercial that are more than twenty acres. And since it's going to be a co-op, that seems like a commercial enterprise. Our rights, living in egg zones where the air used to be clean, you're going to be concentrating more odor in the areas that we live in. That's all I have.
I'm from Landre. And, you know, I, I hear a lot of which they're comparing, you know, dangerous pit bulls and throwing it in the same category as people's little chihuahuas or Labrador Retrievers. Everything is being blown up. And if there's an illegality that's happening environmentally or in some manner, it should be getting dealt with. Instead, what we're seeing is a situation just going after, you know, people's medicines. And, you know, as a medicine, if we're talking serious medicine, there's been, and not just anecdotal, but reports on it reducing tumors. It came out AMA on its efficacy. And basically, what we're hearing is that something that people in California voted for is going county by county and nullifying it for the purposes of what? Booming business with alcohol and, and the real dangerous medications, oxycodones, and I don't know names of all these medications, but I see enough people dying from it. I feel, you know, bad about people that have abuse problems. And I imagine it's quite difficult for people that have these problems to walk down the street and walk by liquor stores, look up and see people, you know, on billboards or in advertisements, turn on the TV and watch people drinking. We're seeing something that's totally away from any kind of reality. And what it is, is stalking people that have serious need. So what's this? That you can get medication or you can grow your own medication if you have enough money that you can buy up lots of land? I mean, only a certain amount of people. That wasn't California law. California law was for those people that need this medicine. And now it's those people that need this medicine that have loads of money so they can afford all this land to do it. And then what? Grow a limited number of plants and then form a collective, which puts it into a whole ever, I, you know, I, I see a lot of disingenuity here. And off of the purpose of pushing something through with very little thought. And, you know, when we're talking about something that's been determined by the state's populace, and to see that just being run out because of people that don't like a particular medication, a plant that grows out of the ground, they feel more comfortable with something that's been pulled out by the pharmaceutical industry from oil or from whatever other purpose. And, you know, see that promoted. I mean, we have so much, so many drug problems that are just rampant. And it's on the dangerous drugs that we see it. We see all the car accidents from all the alcohol. We see it all from the pills. Meanwhile, a benign plant that has very major medical uses is being demonized for the purposes of just money-making, either in the county or the people that have the money that can have huge rows. And then the interaction between the county with those people as to making more money for the, you know, this seems that it's really nasty-minded to put something that is very purposely pushing out the general population, which voted for this law. And, you know, as far as I hear on these arguments about the smell, well, how about people growing maybe the pineapple or blueberry vines? It smells like pineapple or blueberry. It smells like fresh flowers. Does that want to be a problem? I mean, there's so much confusion and disingenuity, as I said, that's coming out to try to ram these things through with very little thought. I mean, this'll, and when it goes into environmental problems for it, I mean, what we see with the things from, you know, all these different tools that are going up for the wine industry and all these different things that are, you know, people just turning their backs on. But meanwhile, a, a family that, you know, needs something, they can't get it. There's a lot of work that's out now from, on doctors on juicing buds in which you drink it cold. You don't get any high from it. If you smoke a joint, you smoke about ten milligrams and, you know, you feel the effects of that. If you're drinking it as a juice, you can drink over fifteen hundred milligrams and you're not feeling the effects. However, it causes the tumors to shrink. It causes the body to, to work efficiently and get rid of a lot of the different problems. And this is all, all based on strong science. And we're seeing that being pushed aside while there's a general promotion of alcohol. And like I said, all the hard drugs that we're seeing, the statistics, you look in the paper, and you're seeing people die just about every day from all these, you know, medications, from overdoses, for all these different problems. I don't know what to say beyond that. It's a really strong issue with a lot of different people. I just know that what somebody voted for and to see it just taken willy-nilly with all this technical talk, going on all these species arguments, doesn't cut it. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Pamela. And I moved up here about two years ago because I lived in Los Angeles. And they have pit bull And they have pit bulls there too, but they don't grow marijuana. There's no place to grow it because it's all concrete. I moved up here because I have multiple sclerosis. I need my medicine. Now, as far as phosphates go, if we don't want phosphates and they're outlawed in other states, then why don't we outlaw it in California? And then we won't have that problem. As far as crime, why don't we ask the criminal system to stop pumping pedophiles and criminals into Lake County? I'm afraid of pedophiles. I'm not afraid of somebody that's growing marijuana. I have two dogs, they're small dogs, and they will go crazy on you if you come to my door, if I get pulled over by the police. They go crazy because they're protecting me. Now, I don't like pit bulls. I don't want pit bulls. They scare me. So that's all I have to say about dogs. Now, as far as living situations, I do not believe that marijuana should be grown around schools in neighborhoods. But I also believe that if you limit to 20 acres of growing marijuana, you are going to invite the cartels to come here and then you're going to have a really, really big problem. They're the ones that bring in the guns. They're the ones that do the harm. I need my medicine. I can show you my MRI. I can show you my spinal test. I believe in my heart of hearts that because I have been smoking and ingesting marijuana that it has lessened the lesions in my brain. I need to be able to grow marijuana or have a farmer grow marijuana for me so that I can talk, move, read, do things that are simple. Now, as far as neighbors are concerned, I could buy a house and my neighbor could be some disgusting person that doesn't have pride in property, pride in ownership, that has dirty diapers, children out front, trash, they don't pick up the trash. What does that have to do with anything? If you want to make regulations, think about it. Think about those of us that really need our medicine. It hurts me in my heart of hearts to hear people arguing over marijuana. Now, marijuana, I have been smoking marijuana for 45 years plus before it was illegal for me to get my medicine. Now it's legal and that's one of the reasons that I moved up here. I love it up here. I think the family, the environment is beautiful. I love the parade, but I still need my medicine. Now, one of the slides that this gentleman showed was not in the neighborhood because I know where that grow place is and I'm going to attend to it. But it is not in a neighborhood. It is out in farmland. Now, 20 acres, I can't afford to pay $300 for rent because if I... If I make money in this country, in this state, then I can't get my insurance and I can't get my medicine, not only marijuana, but copaxone, which happens to be about $4,000 a month. So, take my medicine away, what are you going to do? I feel bad for the guy that has an addiction. I feel bad for anybody that has an addiction. I don't have an addiction. I have a disease. And it angers me that people can throw arbitrary things out into the air when they don't know what they're talking about. I don't like the smell of manure. I don't like the smell of sulfur. I don't like the smell of perfume. It gives me migraine headaches. So are we going to outlaw every area that carries perfume? Are we going to outlaw all of these agricultural places that use manure? Because I don't like the smell of it? I like the smell of a run over skunk. You know, what is the problem? If you don't like it, I'm sorry. I am really sorry, but there's two sides to every story. Now, a lot of people don't like this, that's fine. I don't like the smell of perfume. What's the problem? We're all individuals and we all need something, some medication. And I'm telling you, if you limit the area to 20 acres that those people can afford to buy 20 acres of property, you are going to have cartel after cartel coming into Lake County and doing big growth. And you're going to defeat what you're trying to do. The other thing is, is this county makes a lot of money. Let's talk to PG and E. See how much money they're making. They are making a ton of money. Let's talk about agricultural stores, people that sell soil. They're making money. Again, phosphorus, things that shouldn't go into the ground should be outlawed through the entire state, not just for marijuana. It should be... I can't drink wine because of the sulfates. Should we outlaw sulfates? Should we outlaw wine? I've never heard of anyone dying from a car crash because he was smoking pot. I hear of lots of people dying because they do... Or do speed, or do crack. And I know that this, from coming from Los Angeles, that this is the crack capital of the country. Crack! I don't even know what it is. I want it, but it's crack. I don't want to walk around without eating, you know, but that's not my choice. My choice is to heal my body the best way that I know how. And if you limit the amount of space and the cartels come in and they jack up the price, I will not be able to afford my medicine. Right now, the state pays for my medicine. And that's about it.
It's Alvin's Loomer, probably signed in to speak forth in line, but now's a good time. I think what it really boils down to is the fact that we're... As citizens of California, we voted for access to medicine. So we're having to deal with fighting and access to medicine. Now, I bet there's a whole bunch of people here in this audience who, if they're not taking directly right now, have taken coding, morphine, pain pills. You can't grow that stuff in your backyard. Where'd your medicine come from?
I'll remind you to please speak to...
So, what I'm trying to address here is the fact that this is a legitimate medicine that helps people. It's been proven, it's been shown. Now, the best of the organic that I can grow, I can put in a pill bottle and leave it in that medicine chest. I may have a surgery coming up here a little bit where they're probably going to provide me with pain pills, which I can't grow in my backyard. I can't grow coconut palm. I can't grow opium poppies in my backyard. Yet, that medicine is immediately accessible to me from Walmarts, Safeway. This is stuff now, if I do this medicine and I get over my injury pretty quick or my surgery, and I forget about that pill bottle and it's sitting up there in my medicine chest, then my grandkid comes over who's three years old, gets on the potty, gets on the sink, opens that medicine cabinet. You know, pills taste bitter. And sometimes kids will chase, spit them out, they go "pfft." And that pill is now in that kid. You know what? That kid could be gone because of that little pill. But that kid could eat a whole bottle of the best medical marijuana that I grow and that kid will be there for you to put your arms around it tomorrow. You have to look at the access to medicine and what this type of medicine is. It has helped people, it helps with pain. We are sitting on a possibility of being able to grow really good medicine for people because they don't have access to it. Are you trying to tell me that everybody has to have these 40 acres or 20 acres to grow medicine for their neighbor? These people are in wheelchairs, they have respirators. The medicine works for them. It's impossible for them to grow it. Do you think it's easy to grow this good medicine? How much damage does it take for the coating and the morphine that has to illegally, for some way, seem to come to our country? Because it's an illegal medicine to grow in this country. So when we draw the line of where we provide medicine for our own people from our own backyards, granted, there's always going to be problems no matter what you grow. Certain people are not going to do it right. Hey, there's a lot of backyard mechanics. Their neighbors got all sorts of pissy stuff on them. They run the cars late at night, they dump the oil on the ground. No matter what business you do, you can do it right. And for the most part, from what I see with the cartel of our local people, nobody here is becoming millionaires. And the money stays here. Where's the money go when you buy those drugs? Who, where is that money going to Price Fister and all these other corporations that are bringing you these medicines? That actually if you start to go online, find out that acetaminophen is not very good for your brain at all. Marijuana, depending on how it's grown, especially when it's outdoor, so you grow it backdoor or organic, has up to 17 chemicals that are found in no other plant in the world. And they haven't even really been examining those because they want to go with this THC. It can bring us medicine, it can bring us food through seeds. It's more, if you start to limit this plant, you're limiting many, many options that this plant could provide for our community. And on the medicine, and when it's grown locally, it is grown organically, the money stays here. Mostly, the violence that is involved with marijuana is because it is illegal. Because it's a cash crop. And people down in the city that want to sit on the corner and sell crack and smack and cocaine, then they think they can loan up their trunks with their Uzis and come up and get our crop. The other violence associated is when the boys come in and rudely pull up plants on their own volition. And I just want to go back to what Virgil said. We, the people, we, that's us. We, the people, by majority, voted marijuana as a medicine and it to be allowed. You're not a dictator. I really think, Mr. Coell, you need to listen to what's going on with the rest of the world. States, states and counties are now jumping ahead of us. We were in a good position. You know what? We're going to end up looking really silly if we end up having litigation and further on monies for confiscating what should be a valuable agricultural product or...
I'm going to ask folks, please, make your points without being direct towards any other person in the room. And if I have to, I will have you removed, and that will be that.
I just had milk from Geltzville. You know, I have issues with lots of things. I would say that perhaps the majority of the problem doesn't only include with the fact that we have this continuous war waged by Mr. Coell and establishment against our basic rights and not only right to interests of all of us and all of you too. Marijuana growth is a step forward which, you know, empowers people, ordinary people, to regain some of their abilities to take care of themselves. It could be cabbage. It could be, and I suppose it will lead to that. It's not necessarily only about money or about the medicine. It's about a lifestyle where people use the particular part of their livelihood and their place where they live to regain their independence. But this is basically against the entrenched opinions. And, you know, we are developing nanny state and we are developing enforcement of all sorts. Like, you know, presently, just before I stepped here, I don't see anything wrong with calling someone a dictator. I mean, what is that, a moral way? Because I see the same way. And, you know, Mr. Coell presented you and us with certain number of chosen photographs and chosen cases. But when I understand there were thousands of grows in this county, what is this a story he chose to present? Where are the, is there any particular growth that he actually liked? Was there anything he could show us that, you know, that was very nicely put together that didn't cause any damage? I don't see anything like that. This is a negative approach because Mr. Coell has certain, or excuse me, because the establishment has certain investment in the status quo. And I think that, you know, the basic difference is between the government trying to rule and government trying to serve. And I think there is something to be said about it. I mean, Mr. Coell, if I may use the name at least, is, you know, director of development of this county. There are so many issues, so many helpful possibilities he would have to address. But, you know, over a period of, I suppose, four, five years, there has been this continuous pressure against, I understand that, you know, that some of these situations have to be changed. But, you know, the general pressure is against people growing in general, basically. I, a lot of people who grow other things, they are starting to get into it. We have wine industry. Do you have any table grapes available locally from the wine industry? I'm not knocking it. Wine industry, I have no issue with that per se. But why is it that they need to be favored if they cannot even provide ordinary table grapes for neighbors, local people? So there are all these things. You know, the county could perhaps help people to understand that they are causing damage often. Maybe if you have a neighborhood problem, by the way, the smell of marijuana, it should be, if you want to make a decision, why don't you smell marijuana? That's a part of the complaint, a lot of people supposedly. I think it's overreaction because this is the sweetest and most complex smell I have ever smelled before. And it's a beautiful smell. You know, there are treatments of diseases based on aroma of things, okay? And it's just a puppy dog that this would be some kind of a hammer hitting people over the head. So, you know, there are a number of things we can address, we can work on, but this is dragging us down continuously. And, you know, we still, the lake had algae before. The water is owned by Yolo County. Does the Yolo County own the algae also? That's what I don't know. And, you know, there is, we have a mountain act I heard. This, Mr. Coell's office can possibly bring the people who are even born here, who never had the opportunity to get up there, older people from retirement centers, and let them look at the place where they have born, let them look at the place where they live. But that, all that money, all that effort you spent on and on and on of this issue obviously takes resources. We need to do other things. And, you know, there is another case. We have a culture or we have a history in our backyards in our county which goes back, I suppose, 26,000 years. Why, nobody is getting involved in that. Nobody is. You know, except for some rare individuals. The county does not become interested, except maybe by lip service, in, you know, investigating how many cultures lived here before, how did they live? It just doesn't happen. And, you know, even the local... And, you know, even the local-
Sir, would you stay on topic, please, and talk about this, this specific ordinance and what changes-
Well, I have, we have, the ordinance has not been published, you know, newspaper or anywhere, so I haven't had a chance to address that. I know roughly what it's, what it's, I can't wait any time because it's-
I'm asking, I'm asking you to stay on topic, that's all.
Well, but then back to topic, of course, as I said before, that naturally the twenty acre parcel which would allow the owners to grow marijuana would obviously eliminate most of the people who are doing it now and all these. We have a population in the United States which seventy percent of all people take at least one medicine every day, one particular medicine. We have thirty percent who take more than five a day, okay? These medicines are brought, you know, into us from various different places. They are ten times more costly than medicines in Central America or elsewhere, although they are the same substances. And this is basically twenty-eight parcel will again support the people who have monopoly on our lives. And that's something that, you know, not mentioned that the whole family gets involved in growing living things. And, you know, it affects our food chain, and I'm not talking necessarily about botany, but it's included. Once people learn how to grow one thing, they can grow anything else. And it will become vital, a more vital society. I'm all for stopping the bulldozers, pushing dirt in the creek. Why wouldn't that be something that, you know, you could handle for the ordinance? But to stop people for reasons which may not exist from, you know, growing one particular plant, that has no, that makes no sense. So anyways, this could go on, but like I said, I don't think Mr. Coell published the newspaper. It's essential for us to be able to analyze it on our own rather than do this. But thank you for listening to me.
Is the ordinance available?
It's legally, it was properly, it's actually posted on the legal news website.
It's underdated.
Where?
It's underdated.
Come on. Not anymore. Let's review this. No more. Yeah.
I wanted to just handle-
Speak in the microphone.
Is that better? As you wanted to reiterate, the current ordinance does not prohibit somebody from growing marijuana on parcels. It just has to be in your building approved, and that you still grow on parcels over an acre.
The proposed ordinance allows, would allow indoor on lots an acre or less, a hundred square feet, which numerous, numerous agents, jurisdictions around the state have set that hundred square foot, one hundred watt rating. That, we did not make that up. That is all over the state's report. And this draft ordinance would allow the parcels that are, all of the parcels in the county, regardless of zoning district, as long as they have a residence, to have six mature or twelve immature, grown by the owner or tenant or primary caregiver for someone else, provided that they're over an acre. So it's not a, no, we can only grow in an ag outdoors.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Ron Gries, and I'm here speaking today on behalf of the Temple Unity Coalition, which is a coalition of groups including Americans for Safety, ACCC, the Royal, the UFCW Union, the local groups. And, you know, this is overkill. This is total overkill. It's just, it's just way, way out there. It was created by Mr. Coell and others without any input whatsoever from the stakeholders, without any input from the medical marijuana community. That's not the way it should be done. You know, last year, there was a committee appointed by the Board of Supervisors that was trying to create a good ordinance. And it was disbanded, but the ordinance, the interim ordinance that the Board of Supervisors adopted was pretty much based on where that committee was at that time. And now, although Mr. Coell was out all those meetings and he knew how, and this was a very broad committee that included all sides of this issue. And this committee was coming up with consensus, and that became the interim ordinance. And interim ordinance would be the place to start, in my opinion. The interim ordinance has been pretty much working. People are pretty happy with it from all sides. But this one is just total overkill. It says, basically, it tells ninety-five or maybe ninety-eight percent of the medical marijuana patients that they cannot grow their medicine in their backyards under the sun, which is the way it should be grown. There are certain things in cannabis, for instance, CPD, which is being found to be probably better than THC in terms of medical stuff that grows, you can't really do it indoors. Outdoors is totally different. You need the sun to get the full spectrum of what's in cannabis. The proposed ordinance says you, I'm going to try to concentrate in my remarks on the legal, since I'm a lawyer, I'm going to try to concentrate on the legal aspects of this that are troublesome, but I am going to touch on the social and political, and I'll try not to be too long here. This ordinance says unless you have more than an acre, you can't grow outdoors. You can't grow in the towns, you can't grow in the community growth areas around the towns, the large area around all the towns. It really is a denial, from a legal point of view, this is really a denial of equal protection. It's a violation of the Fourteenth Amendment. It discriminates against an economic class of people, and it favors the rich, equal land. So if you've got a backyard in one of the towns, you can't even grow one plant. And this is ridiculous. People that have small lots or less than an acre should still be able to grow their six plants. They're not hurting anybody. You know, if there's, there's other ways to deal with it. If they are annoying their neighbors, if they're, if they are a nuisance, they can be dealt with that way. But to just blanket say, if you've got less than an acre, or an acre or less, actually, it's a great, if you've got an acre or less, you can't grow in your backyard, is just ridiculous. It's just silly. And it does discriminate. Legally, I think there's good argument that that discriminates against a whole class of people. And then Mr. Coell's comment is, okay, they can grow indoors, but that costs money, and a lot of these people don't have. You need a room to grow indoors, you need another structure to grow indoors. You get all sorts of spider-like problems if you grow indoors. There's all sorts of issues indoors that you don't have outdoors when you're out in the air, circulating air. It's not, it's not a good substitute. It is not, in any way, shape, or meaning. I want to echo a little bit about and expand on what Ed Roney from the Sierra Club talked There are three, at least three environmental indications of this proposed ordinance. First of all, it's going to force people to grow indoors. You know, you got, like I say, ninety-five or ninety-eight percent of the people that are growing outdoors now are in the lots or less than an acre, and they're not going to be able to grow. This is a huge number of people. Now, if even half of those people decide to grow indoors, it's going to greatly influence the carbon footprint. It's certainly going to force people indoors. So you've got the increased electricity use, the carbon footprint that people were talking about. It's also going to drive growers to public land, you know? If you're going to tell people that they can only set up a collective, and they're limited in how big their collective can be, and they can only do it in ag land, and there's five hundred and twenty-nine ag parcels of twenty acres or more, according to Mr. Coell, well, how many of those are actually available? I mean, maybe a handful, maybe ten, maybe twenty, I don't know. But how many are up for sale? How many are available? To say there's five hundred and twenty-nine ag properties, that doesn't mean there's five hundred and twenty-nine ag properties that people can use, far, far less. And right now, there's probably several hundred or a couple of thousand of collectives in this county that are growing on rural residential and other places where there's lots of acreage. So you've got the carbon footprint forcing to grow is indoor. You've got the fact that it's going to drive people to grow on the public land, which is what we don't want. And also, you've got the fact that most of the ag land in this county, if you look at the map, and I just looked at one, most of the ag land is centered around Kelseyville. There's this huge area around Kelseyville that's ag land, and then there's little areas all throughout the county. So this is also going to have an environmental effect. All the collectives are going to be growing in Kelseyville and around Kelseyville, Big Valley. That's where the ag land is. That's also a SECRE issue. That's also an environmental issue. You can't just say, as staff has done, that SECRE is exempt, and that's it. You can't just say that. That doesn't hold up. You're going to wind up with litigation from the Sierra Club. And the Sierra Club is not big on cannabis at all, but they are big on SECRE being followed. You can't just say SECRE is exempt. You need an initial study, as Mr. Roney pointed out. Initial study with systematically identifying, considering the environmental impacts, possible alternatives to the ordinance, and mitigating conditions that could be added to it to support a mitigated negative declaration. So at the very least, before you do anything, you should order an initial study. There's been no substantial evidence presented by staff to support the speculative and conclusory claim that there is no possibility of environmental impacts. In fact, that's just been the opposite of what's been said. An initial study is required by the California Minority Equality Act, that SECRE. SECRE findings are required to be based on substantial evidence pursuant to Public Resources Section two-one-one-six-eight-point-five. But you guys are the planning commission, I'm sure you know all this about SECRE, you've probably dealt with this. But I feel like I need to say it anyway. Before the proposed ordinance is approved, the county must conduct an initial study pursuant to California Code of Regulations, Section one-five-oh-oh-two-K-two, one-five-oh-six-three-A to comply with SECRE procedures. The Planning Commission's recommendation must be accompanied by an environmental assessment with recommended SECRE findings that are based on substantial evidence and not just stories, substantial evidence. The claim here is that cultivation of large quantities of cannabis has created environmental damage and other, in other words, that cannabis cultivation matters, because the regulation can and do have environmental consequences. So the very discussion that's being brought up by staff undermines any and all findings that there's no possibility of environmental impacts from a zoning ordinance that regulates cannabis cultivation. And the county admits that. So there is no substantial or quantifiable evidence of a lot of things that are being said today, including the fact that citizens are experiencing respiratory problems from the order. That's kind of ridiculous, and there's no evidence of that. So, I mean, at the very least, you are to send this back before you do any voting and get this initial study done, that's required by SECRE. There are many aspects of this ordinance that are arbitrary and capricious. The basic overriding thing about any ordinance is it cannot be, any zoning ordinance is it cannot be arbitrary and capricious. It has to be reasonable. And there are many provisions in here that are arbitrary and capricious. I mean, one of them is, let's say you've got a hundred acres, and you're just going to grow two plants. According to this ordinance, you would need to put up a big fence around it, a locked fence. I mean, that's absurd. I mean, you're out there, nobody can see you. I mean, there ought to be a provision in here that if your, if your garden is visible from anywhere, then you got to put a fence around so people can't see you. But to say, I got a hundred acres and I want to grow two plants behind my house, nobody's going to see it, but I have to put a fence around, which if anybody does come, tells them there's something on the other side of that fence. It's just, you know, and that's just one example. The, the problem is the large commercial grows where people are ignoring permits, they're ignoring environmental regulations, they're ignoring, they don't have any common sense, some of these people. And I think everybody on my side of the fence, on my side of this issue, will agree that there's a lot of bad players out there that are giving the good players, the little people, a bad name. So deal with that. Don't deal with the guy who's growing three plants or six plants in his half acre or sixty by a hundred foot lot or whatever it is. Most of them are not hurting anybody. Now, you can easily find a way that if there is somebody growing six plants on a lot that is bothering all their neighbors, there are ways to deal with that. You can use the nuisance laws, you can create laws that can deal with that. But to paint this with a broad brush and say, nobody in this county that's not rich enough to have acreage can grow their cannabis, is ridiculous. It's just, it's just, it doesn't make any sense at all. It's painting this with a broad brush, it's punishing everybody for the sins of the few. So, you know, I just think you need to look at this a little differently and start from the current interim ordinance, which is working, you know, and enforce it and create something like that. But to say that, you know, you don't have, you have less than, less than an acre or an acre or less, you can't grow anything, not even one plant, that's ridiculous. I mean, it is silly to grow forty plants on a fifty by a hundred foot lot. But that's not allowed now. And if they enforce it, they could pull the plants and say, look, you're only allowed six, or whatever, you know, which is what the current law is. So, and then we've got lots of people that own acreage on rural residential. That's where most people live, that they have acreage, they don't live on ag land. Most of them live in rural residential or other parts of the county that are similar to zoning, the rural residential. And a lot of those people are, they may have three or four people in the house that are medical marijuana users. Now, this one's, we say, no matter how many acres you've got, if you're not on ag land, you can only grow six plants. So if I've got four hundred acres of rural residential, and I've got four people in the family that use, I'm limited to six plants. Also, there's a lot of people on property like rural residential that have collectives, small collectives, they're not bothering anybody. Maybe what you can do is allow small collectives on acreage that's not ag and larger collectives on ag land. That would make sense to me. But to tell people that they can't grow for a few others on their own property, when they have lots of property and not hardly, right, is just ridiculous to me. The, the, the whole tenor of this is punitive. Punish everybody for the sins of a few. Deal with these problems that were put up on the, on the, put up here today for everybody to see. Deal with those problems, but don't punish everybody for it. People need their medicine. And the people, getting back to the small people in their backyard, you know, some will be able to afford to buy the equipment to grow indoors, and they may have room to grow indoors, but most won't. Most won't be able to. And maybe they don't even have dispensaries in the county. Where are they going to get their medicine? It's just, I'm just flabbergasted at this. You know, you know, lawyers have a way of negotiating. If you've got a, this is an analogy, if you've got a personal injury case that you think is worth a hundred thousand dollars, you might demand half a million dollars, and then the insurance company says, oh, yeah, that's worth a hundred thousand, but we'll give them ten thousand. So you start negotiating. I almost feel like staff came up with this as a negotiating tool. I just can't believe they really believe that this is legitimate ordinance. I almost feel like they say, okay, they've got all these marijuana proponents out there, and they're going to want the sky, so we're going to start with something that gives them nothing. And then we can negotiate into something in the middle. Because I really, I'm just flabbergasted at this, I really am. To think that anybody thinks that this is legitimate and is fair to the people of this county is beyond me. So in my mind, this may be Mr. Coell's negotiating tool. Start with this incredibly strict thing so that eventually we can get to the middle. And that's what I asked you to do. Look for the middle. This is not the middle. This is not the middle. Where we're at with the interim ordinance is pretty much the middle. So I will get down and thank you very much for your time, and I hope that you will consider this. But the most important thing is that you really need to deal with the SECRE issue, and you've heard from the Sierra Club already on this. You know, you can't just say SECRE doesn't apply, period. You have to do an initial study. So thank you for your time.
Now, there's been a lot of thinking about Lake County's wine industry. But I work in the industry and we're making huge strides in making a positive name for the county. But for every positive press article, there is two negative ones about the crime that plague our area. And we must work together to change this. We don't have criminals breaking into wineries to steal the wine. I'm not growing wine in my backyard and making wine in my backyard and putting my neighbors at risk. I think a very important thing for the planning commission and board of supervisors to remember is that we can't please everyone. And although you will receive a lot of pressure, we have to do the right thing. We have to take back the county. We need to make it difficult to grow here so that they grow elsewhere. So maybe we can look at the matrices that Mr. Coyle was presenting and find a stricter code enforcement in other county and implement that here and just push the illegal ones out. And as for them getting their medication, that's fine with me. Let's get dispensaries then, because it doesn't need to be grown here in huge farms. We really need to kick the criminals out of Lake County and make this a more appealing place for people to live and vacation in. And then as for another comment that somebody had made about if you don't like the smell, that's too bad. If you don't like the smell of perfume, well, I don't have a perfume factory in my backyard. I'm not making you smell my perfume in your own house. Whereas I can even enjoy my own house because of all the marijuana that I have no choice but to smell. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I have a letter from a resident who suffered a serious brain injury to the extent he should never be in there again. Dear Planning Commission members, I am unable to come to the meeting on November 14th because of a recent accident. However, I want to express my keen interest and support of the land use regulations made proposed by the county of Lake for unincorporated areas of Lake County. The environmental and social problems related to the increased level of marijuana cultivation in Lake County are of great concern to me and to many others. I support the proposed land use regulations for the cultivation of marijuana. Sincerely, Roberto Lyons, Lower Lake County.
Hello, my name is Daniel LaPlana of Lower Lake. I acknowledge the planning commission and the community development department's intentions and efforts to make this county safer and more ecologically responsible and economically attractive place to live. I realize that the cultivation of medical marijuana is a complex issue with many implications for our county. And after seeing Mr. Coyle's slideshow, I do agree that these environmental issues and safety issues need to be addressed in one form or the other. And I feel at this point, we haven't really found the most effective and clear way to address these issues. That being said, I feel that this proposed ordinance is too restrictive. I urge the planning commission and the community development department to reconsider the amount of plants that would be allowed on the parcels size from half an acre up to 20 acres in size. There is a big difference between a half acre parcel and a 10 acre parcel and a 20 acre parcel. And as the ordinance, this proposed ordinance is written right now, they're basically all treated roughly the same with six plants. Anything less than 20 acres is either zero or six plants. So I believe that we were making progress with the, as Mr. Green stated, with the think tank that was coming up with the ordinance that is now currently the interim ordinance, which scales the amount of plants per size up to a maximum size. So I would urge something more that is more closely reflects the interim ordinance and maybe making some adaptations to the enforcement of people that are not in compliance with that ordinance. Majority of what I saw on the presentation was stuff that was out of compliance of the current interim ordinance. And what I hear from Mr. Coyle saying is that they don't have the means to effectively and timely enforce these things. So let's say that somebody is out, has four greenhouses and a whole dozen, and 600 plants. Maybe currently they need 30 days to abate them. Maybe we could write some language into the point where, hey, you can still only have 36 plants or whatever the cap is for that particular property, but give the community development department, the sheriff's department, more tools that they can, hey, you're obviously out of compliance, we're going to abate you today. And so, and I am very well, the sheriffs and the task force has abated people with zero notice. So I also feel that this type of ordinance that scales it up has proportional to the property size, starting from six plants to a maximum of 36 or 48 or whatever we decide is fair. I feel that is most fair to the general community at large. With this proposed ordinance, people that are within the community growth boundaries that can have zero plants, they, I don't feel like there is a fair access to able, for them to be able to collectively grow on other parcels due to limiting to the 20 acre parcels, which as Mr. Green noted, that those are pretty limited access to those parcels. It's an economic challenge. I personally don't know anybody in my circle of community that owns a 20 plus acre of agricultural lot with a residence developed on it. And then I wanted to do some comparison related to what we've been currently done on a rural residential lot as compared to what's proposed in this ordinance. Currently, under Article 8 of the zoning ordinance, a person on rural residential can construct a 6,000 square foot greenhouse, and that is with no permits. And a 6,000 squeegee is, feet is larger than this room here. They can have animal husbandry and other agricultural uses. With a minor use permit, which I don't believe is too hard to obtain, you can have a 10,000 square foot greenhouse, a commercial worm farm, a commercial agricultural project, or a small winery. You can plant up to acres and acres of grapes under the rural residential. I don't have any problems with grapes. I like wine, a lot of people like wine, but I just don't feel that it's being treated the same. So under this ordinance, you could have, theoretically, you could have five acres of grapes, which takes up roughly, and I could produce up to 15,000 cases of wine. And so with this proposed ordinance, scenario one, I could have a 10,000 square foot greenhouse, five acres of grapes, and produce 15,000 cases of wine if I'm in the wine business. And then if I'm a medical marijuana patient, I can grow six plants, which takes roughly about 200 square feet. So we're talking about 1,000 times in full 200 square feet of this or 200,000 square feet of grapes. So when we're talking about the environmental impacts of 200, six plants of 200 square feet of medical marijuana versus 200,000 square feet of grapes, I think it's, you don't have to even use math to figure out that grapes are going to use exponentially more pesticides, more fungicides, more herbicides, and more fertilizers. And I know the majority of the grapes in the ground in this county are using chemical fertilizers with lots of phosphates. And I do not support the use of chemical fertilizers. I prefer that we stage more towards organic cultivation, but I know that's a long process and that's, you know, we have to work on that together. So I do, I submit, I support the planning commission, I support the community development department in finding solutions, and I know the solutions are not easy. So let's do, I just, let's consider the well-being of all, the environment, all the residents of Lake County and craft in this ordinance. Let's, yeah, so I do, I feel for the people that have neighbors where they feel like their safety is in jeopardy, they don't particularly like the smell. I think some people like the smell, people don't like the smell. So it's not just like, it's just a bad thing in general. It's a personal preference, I suppose. So I do agree that some of these issues are there, but I feel that somebody responsibly growing six plants in their backyard is not necessarily more of a nuisance than any other thing that somebody could do in their backyard. So thank you for your consideration.
My name is Nikki Taveras, and I'm in East. My husband and I came here 20 years ago when we bought our business. In the last three years, our neighborhood has changed. My neighbor and I, we walk down the street every morning and smells, and we see the grow, and growing plants in our neighborhood. These are small dogs, they're not going to bed. And our business, people grow, they don't stay because of the smell in our neighborhood. My next door neighbor, Dr. Tony, grows plants upon his roof. And I also have a rental house that my husband informed that they're looking for someplace else to stay because of the grows, the new lawn and the smell. And they don't want, they should have rented one more. Unless I have to say the kind of neighborhood.
My name is Charles. I have a massive, serious, severe, started on my cooking. I have taken so much medication that I have gone through dialysis, thousands of pumps of water. And the county has to pay for that. I have severe head injuries, I was told by the county sheriff's department, so I neglect. And I also have a major pneumonia. I didn't take any pills, I just gave them my medical marijuana. I haven't been on dialysis anymore. I don't have severe head trauma. Severe head trauma, sitting head up against a wall multiple times, you see how that feels, and try to survive. Hey, it's impossible. I have body terms, I can't control myself. I was approved for in-home care, but I didn't take the in-home care because I didn't need it. It's cost the county money. The county doesn't need to pay for something I can take care of myself. I don't believe that I can't grow six plants because I don't have an acre that's in a farming area, whatever you want to call it, or the coating. I don't have neighbors around me, but I can grow because I'm in this community growth area and I have under 20 acres or an acre, or whatever you guys want. I don't believe it's fair. How much medication did the county have to pay for? They don't have to buy my medication no more. I don't take pills no more. I can actually stay awake longer without falling asleep 20 minutes after taking my pill. And now I'm going to be forced to go back to taking pills that didn't help with all my symptoms. There's no collectives around me where I can purchase anything. And that's not fair. I own my own home. I've been here since 1980. Why am I being put down? These people here don't deserve to be intimidated by bullies, whether they're growers, or dogs, or whatever, as long as they're compliant. I don't dump nutrients on the ground, I don't use any of that. And that's wrong because vineyards use stuff called work mix, which is lime, which if you have asthma, it increases that penfold over. And I live right down the road from a vineyard, and I can't breathe in the summer when they get their grapes and they're putting that stuff down. Thank you.
I'm going to remind you, please hold the applause.
Hi, I'm Michael Horner, I'm a resident of Cobb, California. I'm also an independent consultant and a drug policy activist. So I worked in Los Angeles, Nevada, Colorado, and some of the architects of the best regulation that is happening around the country. So at state and local levels, and we're fortunate to have some of those minds in Lake County. One of the head lead, the director of the USCW, the union has been active in organizing what they believe is an emerging industry and with a focus on some alone, natural and organic medicine created by cottage industry of small farmers in communities like ours. Not criminals, not people who wish to operate outside of the law, people who want to be compliant in any way they can. The philosophical discussion, albeit a good one, has been had and had to death. I stand here to tell you all the health benefits of Kansas, and talk about the patients that we can help, but that has been well established. Both the medical community and by state law, law passed by, it's supposed to be the highest authority, the people who are being governed. And I think the conversation for Lake County at this point needs to be more pragmatic than philosophical. We brought us one belief, and I have several of my own, we have to deal with this, what is, and as a local government, we have to deal with what will be. I've been in Lake County for 15 years, and as an accounting executive for a local broadcasting company, and as the president of the clearly Chamber of Commerce, I've spent a lot of time with some of the business people. I worked for the radio station, we cannot die hard, but our largest advertiser closed its doors. The new largest advertiser was now a garden supply store. Several of my accounts were involved directly in the prop, in the business of Proposition 215. And those that were not would say repeatedly to me that they would not be in business or have money to advertise on their radio station if it was not for patients spending cannabis dollars and local purchases in Lake County. Not just in hardware, building supplies, soil, garden supply, trucking, and ancillary 215 businesses, but in sporting goods, clothing, mobile electronics, home improvement, health fitness, and other retail, as well as service industries, restaurants, hair salons, auto repair. Over and over, I've heard this from my clients, if it was not for cannabis farmers, that they would not be in business. At one point, I would have estimated cannabis to make up nearly half of our local economy. And I made this point, this point, when I was the president of the Chamber of Commerce, over and over to the board of supervisors, long ahead of any of the crisis that we have been in for the last couple of years, and I am going to call it crisis, because it's gotten out of control. That how important an economic factor this is going to play in Lake County's future. If somehow we manage to eradicate cannabis completely and entirely from Lake County tomorrow, within six months, you would not recognize our community.
Yay.
Stores and restaurants would close, and we would see more light than we ever have imagined. Sorry. Our sales tax revenue would decrease along with property tax revenue, damaging our infrastructure, education, and public safety. If we can agree that cannabis is a substantial part of our economy, I don't think anybody can argue with that, then we are in charge of finding a solution. There are real and valid arguments against cannabis in our communities, issues that need to be addressed. How do we preserve the integrity of our neighborhoods where we are raising our children while not diminishing the tax revenues paid for their education? How do we preserve the natural resources of our county for the next generation while making sure economic opportunities exist for them here? In other words, how do we find a way to live with cannabis? And, you know, I use the word cannabis, not marijuana. Marijuana is a slang term that was developed by and at that cannabis movement years and years ago. It was known for mostly by racism. Being involved in this part of policymaking, I'm very aware of how northern California counties are dealing with this issue. There are several examples of poor policymaking and some excellent examples of policy that have been affected for both patients and communities. Here are a few examples of what might help this commission. In Butte County, they have passed an ordinance with very limited numbers on small parcels, but up to 99 plants, which is the California state guideline, on parcels of 40 acres or more. After one season, the county released a staff report with the recommendations as to what worked and what parts of the ordinance did not work. They tracked complaints and found that plant counts, when I say plant counts, I mean the 48 or the six that we're talking about here today, had very little impact on the amount of complaints received. Gardens in more densely populated areas generated more complaints. Butte County, as of yesterday, has revised their ordinance according to the information in this staff report, and their plant counts have remained unchanged. Now, if you read the staff report from Butte County, it has a lot of real valuable insight from their administration, from the people who are feeling these complaints, and people in this job and in the administration of the county. And they bring up almost a page and a half on just the plant count issue. And just a quick quote from what they said, "The central questions regarding plant count seems to be what is reasonable. Are reductions in plant counts the only way to address harms, or can the harms be addressed regardless of plant counts?" And I think crafting another ordinance that is effectively a prohibition via the use of plant counts is an irresponsible way to govern a burgeoning industry. Butte County has passed a hard fought ordinance around 60 plants on larger parcels with requirements for setbacks and fences. Moving cultivation out of neighborhoods into rural areas has resulted, for them, in fewer complaints. Sacramento had a small handful. Other counties have complete bans on outdoor cultivation. And this ordinance that we're suggesting today is very much a ban in a lot of different ways. These counties are mired in lawsuits and legal challenges, things that we can't afford as a county. And frankly, I think that readdressing this so soon after we fought so hard last year is irresponsible use of our county's resources. The largest difference in the counties whose ordinances are working and their ability is their ability to solve problems and work through issues rather than shove some sort of a legal prohibition and a population that doesn't want it. In the most cases, the administrators report patients eager to comply in counties with responsible ordinances. If you draft reasonable, responsible regulation, the real, honest, hardworking patient caregiving cultivators in this county will be eager to comply with whatever you suggest, if it means that the Lake County Task Force doesn't show up at their house, cut their locks, and cut down their gardens. They will do whatever it is you ask them to do and grow within whatever limits that you set for them, if they are responsible and keep the patients' needs and the needs of the community. I recently visited a garden that was set up for 99 plants, which is the state recommended guideline, but had been adapted for the current ordinance this year for 36 plants. This garden is on a 10 acre parcel and represented a very small section of the property. If you had observed this property from the end, this 99 plant garden would occupy what looked like a postage stamp on the face of a letter. Very small for 99 plant garden. This garden, 10 acres, was 200 feet from this property and was a nuisance to no one. In the same neighborhood, there are many gardens just like this one with, and no complaints. And this neighborhood that I was in is a neighborhood subdivided into five, 10, 20 acre parcels. So you have these five and 10 acre parcels, and they're all right next to each other. Even the neighbors who don't participate in Prop 215 are grateful for the ones that do because they brought their property down, because they brought some infrastructure that they didn't have, whether it be roads, or electricity, or whatever, into the neighborhood that they didn't have before. And I've talked to, I've talked to people like that. These are in the neighborhoods that we're talking about here, the rural residential, the zone are our neighborhoods that are filled with five, 10, 20 acre parcels. If you take a drive, if you take a drive out in Upper Lake, or out to, I'm not with, I would point to the Eagle, Rebel Eagle Ranch, or any of these neighborhoods where it's prevalent, and drive around and take a look and see who's being bothered by what their neighbors are doing, it's just not, it's just not happening. People who are currently operating within the confines of the law, who are eager to do so, generally are not a nuisance to anybody else. But they're necessary, necessary for the economy. In my opinion, the responsible ordinance for Lake County, you know, there's a, there's an enforcement issue here. I just, myself this morning, just did a quick Google search, I'm not a lawyer. A quick Google search of Fourth Amendment rights as it pertained to code enforcement. What rights does law enforcement, code enforcement have to enter property without a warrant? And there is a list of case law that would cover a page of well-documented Supreme Court cases that do not permit violation of our constitutional Fourth Amendment rights or enforcement of code violations. And there is instruments in place by which the county, the Lake County Sheriff's Office, the code enforcement office could employ administrative search warrants if they needed to enforce these, enforce these ordinances. And I fielded 20 phone calls and more from people in this community, people who I helped organize for the USCW, USCW members, people who have counted on me to influence policy for them, people who are compliant legal participants in Prop 215 cultivation, telling me that while they've done everything that they had been expected to do, they, if they had vacant land, they've applied for permits and they've started construction, if they had 99 acre plants, parcels, their gardens, they've cut down the 36 plants, they've done everything that they thought was required of them under the ordinance, and still, without a search warrant, code enforcement, Lake County Sheriff's Office, Narcotics Task Force have shown without warrants, cut locks, made entry to property illegally, and cut down people's legal marijuana gardens. This is happening on a regular basis. And grind is an issue, right? One of the people that I, one of these calls from, told me that they called the Lake County Sheriff's Office to report a burglary, someone had came into his property with a shotgun and a machete with intention of zip tying him, they had zip ties in their backyard, and robbing him. When he called the sheriff's department for help, they showed up with not any interest in investigating the crime that had just happened, only an interest in eradicating the marijuana. They threatened to arrest the victim of a violent crime if they complained that they were cutting down his plants, getting legal ownership. And for me, that's a more horrible travesty of justice than anything else that we can talk about and put on these slides. Patients deserve equal protection under the law. If these guys could call the Lake County Sheriff's Office when somebody is trying to crawl over their fence and not have to live in fear of being carved off the tail and having their, their gardens cut down, they would do so, and they would no longer be a target for these criminals. They're criminals that are doing this, not patients, not medical marijuana advocates, cultivators, growers. These are criminals who are kicking indoors, shooting people in the stomach, who are robbing and charging what is a legitimate and legal industry in this county. In my opinion, a responsible ordinance for Lake County would include requirements for fencing and setbacks, prohibited growing within 1,000 feet of schools, daycare centers, and youth centers, and limit plant counts only on small parcels, less than an acre. However, I think most people would be content with the current urban city ordinance for one more year, going to put time into a thoughtful ordinance that meets the needs of the entire community. And I know that a lot, I can tell by reading, and I read ordinances, I got ordinances here, I read ordinances. This, this one is put together well, and it was, a lot of thought went into it. Where it was remiss, and it was not considering the needs of patients, and not considering input from the people in the community and the people involved in Prop 215 as operating walkers, lighters, dispensaries, or cultivators. And had those people been invited to the table, we might actually have an ordinance here that we could all be happy about, we could all be considerate of, but we didn't have a place at this table. This table, I think, was reserved for, for members of law enforcement and young people who feel the worst of the complaints that come in from illegal growers, irresponsible criminals who are exploiting what is an honest law for their own gains.
I ask you to wrap it up, sir.
Yeah, so anyway, a thoughtful ordinance that meets the needs of the entire community. And cannabis today is different than it'll be now. Some call it an emergency industry, some speculate it's to be in excess of $10 billion a year, that's huge. You know, we deserve a piece of that pie. And cannabis means good jobs and economic stability for our county. If time is stopping anti-cannabis for the sake of being so, we do our best with you.
Thank you.